This meeting to order, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli. De Penya.
Here.
Graziano.
Here.
Councilmembers Notari, Rovell, and Shrimaloh Burke will not be attending this evening, and Mayor Mailham.
Pledge allegiance. I'm sorry, sunshine notice.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in the Thursday, May 20th, 2021 additions of the Belleville Times and Star Ledger. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the Belleville Town Hall Bulletin Board, and copies are in file in the municipal clerk's office.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody, just want to welcome you to our first meeting in June. This is the combined conference regular meeting. As always, different myself along with different council members have the ability to put certain topics on for conversation. I say to the public that is watching us now, this might be a little awkward, but these conversations are in and between the mayor and council and our invited guests. Unfortunately, the public does not necessarily participate in these discussions. However, if you do hear something that you want to comment on, you have every right to do so during the public portion of the meeting. So we're not being rude. We're just talking amongst ourselves, and you're here listening as our audience. I have three items on, nobody else it seems like put any items on, so we're just going to take mine fairly quickly. Do we have Mr. Jerry here?
Yes.
Yes, Jerry, going to have you come forward. So I've been in contact with Jerry and his, he could tell us a little bit about his organization, but basically what they do, they teamed up, I guess in part with Tim Howard, who is a former U.S. National Soccer Team player. They're local, I believe, Carney-based? Or former Carney-based?
I grew up in Carney, yes.
Grew up in Carney?
Across the, across the river.
So your, his organization does what's called Futsal Fields. If you're unfamiliar with what a Futsal Field is, it's basically a five-on-five turf soccer field, and they're smaller scales, almost the size of like a roller hockey rink, and they do them relatively affordably, we'll say it. And for a municipality who's interested in doing things like that, I just wanted to hear them out and see what, what you have to say. Do you need, are you interested in making?
Oh, I will, I'll speak from the heart.
I thank you for that, because we've been having some technical issues.
Well, I'm not the most technical either. Yeah, is that okay? Yeah, good.
So yeah, again, the floor is yours.
Yeah, so a little background on myself. I am the executive director on the boy's side at Players Development Academy. It's a soccer club in New Jersey, Zarafath, New Jersey, which is central New Jersey. We are one of the, similar to AU basketball, an elite level club, and during the pandemic, I had a moment where I was, had too much time on my hands and had to think about what we're doing. And yes, we serve all of the elite players in New Jersey, but when I think of it, it became, it made me look at the sport in our country and what it means. So our club is tuition-based. So the game in general in the U.S. has become upper-middle class, and I thought, well, what can we do to address this issue? We clearly want to bring the game to more people, and diversity, both in terms of race, religion, color, ethnicity, but more importantly, socio-economically. And so for our club to have people come from cities to our field every night, it's not feasible, because the parents don't have the same infrastructure in terms of, you know, if someone's an executive in New York, they can leave their desk and bring their kid to practice, not an issue. For the kids that we're trying to reach, transportation's not always available, and certainly one or both parents could be working, and it's not something that's feasible. So we thought bringing the game to the players is the best way to do that. So subsequently, we've gone on this mission to build these Futsal Courts, which are popular in South and Central America, to bring the game to the kids and offer these little oasis so that maybe more people can fall in love with the game. Myself, I'm a first generation, I'm the first one in my, in my family who went to college, and it was because of soccer. So I feel if we can build these courts, and we have just one success story, one every 10 years, where we get one or two or three or four kids who get a scholarship because of their, they fell in love with the game, whether, you know, through their family or through accident at one of these courts, it's been phenomenal. It would be, it'd be worth every penny that we spend. So we've partnered currently with Robert Wood Johnson to sponsor these fields. So we will pay for the field if we've had, if the governments are on board and have a site and, you know, are willing to work through this with, between us and the builders, the fields are there. So currently, we've done two in New Brunswick. We've just closed today on one in Trenton. The next one, and we've had a little bit of challenge in terms of bureaucracy in Newark. So that's all signed off on, but now there's red tape that's kind of stopping progress, and the progress would be for the children, not for anybody else, and that's how we see it. So, so we're looking to build more. We want to do at least 10 in New Jersey, and then we're going to go nationally. So I think there's obvious benefits to the children, right? Health, well-being, mental well-being, a place to congregate, a safe place to congregate, the cardiovascular benefits, reducing childhood obesity, and just providing opportunities for them to fall in love with the game. So if the children are benefit, then I think the communities are also benefiting from this. What we've seen in New Brunswick, it's this organic way of children just getting together, and I go all the time and just sit there from 4:00 to 7:00, and there's this shift between the after-school crowd, then there becomes an older crowd, and then becomes men and families. So it's just been this wonderful opportunity, and the goal is to put it, put the facilities in a place where children can walk to. And I'm certain, I know the, you know, I know the neighborhood, there's plenty of places where children can can walk to.
There are. We have one that we believe has been identified, so we've been on a good trend here in Belleville with redoing our recreational facilities. We just broke ground this weekend on a $5.5 million new complex up at the municipal stadium. We just reinvested into a park called Fairway Park with basketball courts and community gardens and also, we've been on a good trajectory when it came to recreational upgrades. We had, I know Councilman Cazarelli and I have discussed, we have a, an area right next to one of our elementary schools. We consider it down the Valley Section Number Nine School. It used to be an old roller hockey rink. It's now abandoned. We did have our tax assessor check out the size of it, and it's, you could put three Futsal Courts there and have a parking lot. There's a lot.
Is that indoor facility?
It's, it's outdoor.
It's outdoor, so it's like a outdoor rink?
Yeah, it used to be an outdoor, now it's just an empty.
Was it street hockey?
Yes.
Okay, so it's tarmac?
Right.
Okay.
Now it's just an empty abandoned lot, and we store vehicles on it.
Perfect, yeah.
And that would, you would be able to put three, if not four, I don't know if you have it, do you? Okay, so we have an acre of property.
Yeah, so these courts are pretty small, 40 by 70.
Yeah.
Feet. Yeah, yeah. And our cost is $65,000.
Right.
So we'd be willing to build one, three.
Right. Maybe you build one, we build one. I mean, this is just a discussion.
That's perfect, yeah, no, look, and we're open to any of that, you know, but currently we're trying to use the resources that we have from Robert Wood Johnson St. Barnabas Hospital System, and there's a great synergy there between Clara Moss.
Right. And the article I saw, somehow Tim Howard was connected.
Tim is connected. We, Tim, obviously, Tim played, was our national team goalkeeper for many years. He's.
At Carney, right?
No, he's on New Brunswick, which is why we.
I'm thinking Tony Meola, I'm sorry.
Tony, Tony Meola, and John Harks and Todd Ramos are the Carney guys, yeah. If you would like, we'll bring, if you'd like, we'll bring Tony to this one in Belleville.
That would be nice.
We'd be happy to bring Tony.
My nieces played for Carney Thistle.
Okay, so, so you know, and I was a Thistle person as well, so, yeah.
Okay, is there any?
So, yeah, rather than me talk, I'd rather answer any questions that you guys might have.
Yeah, I do, because the question I have is, you said talent, right? It's, it's talented, they try, the kids try out for the team, correct? Or does everybody?
No, he's not presenting a team, he's building a.
No, what I'm doing is building the soccer equivalent of a basketball court.
Right.
That where kids can come and it's organic. They come from the house and they go play.
Recreation program can then take over.
Well, the other part is, we also offer coaching, right? We would offer any kind of programming that the recreation department sees fit.
Right.
So we wouldn't just go there and abandon it. We're happy to support it, but really it needs to come organically.
Well, that's, that's my point. First, you have the organically piece of it, and then now you have, once the kids get there, now you want to teach them, right? I mean, then you want to let them grow, because that's how to get to those next levels, and if you have that talent within you or in your organization, that's another way to look.
Yeah, and I think in our country, that specific talent that we're talking about gets lost.
Exactly.
Because of the cost of the game and the barriers to participating at what you would call an elite level.
Right.
So, yeah.
If I was just to summarize this, your organization would be, not holding you to anything, would be potentially interested in building one field for us.
We would be happy to build one, you know.
The township may opt to build a second one, if we want. If not, just the one. And then that facility, we'll call it a new sports facility, gets enveloped into our recreational program for trainings, for classes, for leagues, and then.
In conjunction with Players Development Academy, we'd be happy to sport in any way we can. Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
Sounds like a, so yeah, every time we have a new idea, we always bring it before the council.
Well, I think the problem is with these things, people get suspicious. Well, what's the catch, right? So there is no catch. It's, we're trying to change the game. We have this feeling that, you know, we can do more for the sport, and anyone, if you seen the game last night, the U.S. Mexico, we could use more talented, gritty players. We would like to, we would like that, and, yeah, we want to help the game in our country.
And talent coming from, and talent coming from all over, it's phenomenal.
No brainer for us. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, what, just real quick, what's the surface, what is it? Is asphalt?
Astroturf.
Astroturf.
It's a field, an equivalent of field turf.
As long as we have a flat surface, it's, obviously, they won't have to do any.
So it's fenced in, completely fenced in.
Okay.
And the goals are now cut into the fence, and that fence extends beyond it.
Okay.
So there's, it's just a cage, essentially. It's a cage, a turf cage.
Nothing has to move, no, no, no netting has to move, it's all.
There's no lines, there's no netting, there's no goals, there's, it's self-standing.
As long as we give you a site that's level and flat and.
And no toxins.
Right, right.
Yeah, of course.
Well, you'd be surprised.
If it goes over, over concrete, you could put it over concrete or asphalt?
I think what they do is dig up the concrete for drainage purposes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so if you can just leave, this is our township manager, Mr. Iacono, if you have any, any literature and a card on you at least.
I don't, but I, I refer you to our website, which is.
He's looped in all of our emails, by the way, and you've been on those emails.
Yeah, the website is Urban Initiative, I'll just, I'll reach out via email. Yeah, perfect.
Something that we, I think we're all very, very, very interested in.
It's awesome, yeah, and obviously, it's a, me personally, it's a, you know, place I'd really like to get something done in, so, yeah.
I think it's going to work.
Awesome.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks very much.
Okay. So next item is item number B, Office of Emergency Management. This was initially going to be something else. It's not turning into that. So the only thing I just wanted to bring up is, as we start working on budgets for next year, I know Chief and I have had some conversations about this, it's probably time to create an office, only because we do fund it. So just so the residents know that we received $10,000 for OEM. That money was historically put to an OEM coordinator and a deputy coordinator, then the township added $10,000 to that. So really, the township's contribution to this entire department is only $10,000, but we'd never know where the money's coming from. Just a simple thought to create an office of OEM, maybe $5,000 out of police budget, $5,000 out of fire budget that funds it for the $10,000 that we need, and we're done. Initially, I was going to, initially I was going to talk, you want all $10,000, Chief? Initially, I was going to talk about TOs and stuff like that, but we're really sanctioning it to state, and part of that TO conversation was going to be just limiting the amount of deputies that we can have. We potentially had, you know, an issue in the past where you could, it seemed like you could potentially appoint an unlimited amount, and obviously the state says only one deputy, so we were allowed one coordinator, one deputy, and that's it. But the chief has brought it up to me before, we didn't know exactly where money was going to come from. Every time we have to fund it, they send, they rob it from the, the chief or rob it from the fire department. So simple, department, organized, structured by ordinance, $10,000, whether we fund it independently or $5,000 from each of our emergency services. Just wanted to put that out there. Pretty easy one. The last topic is the feather banners. Those who don't know, the feather banners are also called the banana banners. It's those angled ones. So I think they look terrible most of the time when they're not maintained, and driving over down Washington Avenue constantly and seeing them all over the place. The final straw was a picture I sent the manager, where I must have seen 15 on one property. They were old, they were torn, they were tattered, it looked absolutely terrible. We have a new type of, of property inspector now in the past six months or so, more of a quality of life inspector. Most people don't tend to notice when the negative goes away, but you will not find blinking lights on Washington Avenue anymore, those neon lights that blink all hours of the night. You won't find them anymore, because we're finally enforcing that, that ordinance. That person also handles graffiti, that person also handles signage that's not, that's not code. So when we started enforcing that, and just so everybody knows, the enforcement of that is not enforcement, we're not interested in penalties, we're not interested in being punitive, we're interested in compliance. So I really think that particular person does a great job of reaching out to the business owners and homeowners. If you have a home that's got three feet of grass on it, there's a note saying, can you please trim the grass, and we'll work with you and everything else. So as we started to ask for compliance without using these signs, because they look terrible, some of the business owners reached out to myself, I know Councilman Cazarelli got some inquiries about it, and they really make an argument that these signs do attract people and they do work, and potentially a compromise could be that you can't hammer them into our sidewalk like they used to, you can't stake them into our grounds like you used to, but they do have weighted stands, and potentially if you put it out during your office, during your store hours and wield it back in, we can probably live with that, so.
And the number, number of them?
Number of them, one or two, depending on the size of your square footage, maybe.
Yeah, exactly.
So I usually get in trouble when I try and put amendments on, because the attorney yells at me and says, we never discussed it. So this is the discussion. You might, in the next meeting or so, see an ordinance that changes that, and I will then be in compliance without doing anything, without, what else, am I correct, counselor? He's the person that tells me no more times than anybody else. So that's what we're going to do. Anyone have a problem with that?
Nope.
Hearing none? Good. We are going to move on. Report of the, now, I think, I think we're going to go to report of the manager, and I think he's going to share his screen for the first time in the history of Belleville.
I think I did it once.
Well, no, I mean, not you, I mean, audio/video wise, we're going to get this right. So we are live streaming, the live feed has not stopped, I see. Look at that, everybody. Now, timeout. I want the viewing public, this is the real trick, I want the viewing public at home to see the screen.
Yes.
Director, producer, we're going to call, we're going to call Jackie the producer today. So now she's changing the camera in the ceiling to view these monitors, so people at home can see what's being presented. So everybody in the audience should know that when we have a planning board meeting or a zoning board meeting, if you're not here and there's an expert presenting internally like it is here, those that are watching from home should be able to see the screen. I don't see the screen moving yet.
Can we shoot the camera onto the?
We are. Camera's not moving, though. You gotta, we have a preset to the. Nope. All right, well, listen, the live feed's still up, we're good. It was a preset. Did it move? I'm waiting for mine to move. There's a delay. You have it?
There it is.
I don't have it on, I don't have it on town website. Oh, there it goes. Look at that. Wow. Not going to jinx us. Mr. Manager?
So good evening, everyone, and I, I thought I'd change the manager's report a little bit, which is just some interesting updates that we're working on. So we do have a grant writer, Millennium, they've been with us for a few years, I believe, more than two? Five years? Okay, thank you. And so I just want to just give the council and certainly members of the audience just a little update of what we're working on, what we've actually received, what we're presently, what we've submitted, and what we're working on. So just a real quick glance of our screen here. These are the grants that we've actually received in the last 12 months. We start off with the New Jersey General Body Worn Cameras, 224,000. It's 110 cameras. That's great news. At the last meeting, we spoke about the $5,000 grant from SNY for baseball equipment. The Essex County History Grant Program, 800, that's an 800 for a historic signage at the Reformed Dutch Church. I know Councilman Cazarelli was very involved in that one. The New Jersey, I'm sorry, New Jersey Attorney General Body Armor Replacement, that's $6,500 for bulletproof vests. The New Jersey Traffic Safety Holiday Drive Sober Crackdown, they allocate $6,000. Essex County Open Space, 150,000 for Fairway Park. And we also were successful in receiving the U.S. Department of Justice COPS Hiring Grant, which provides $1.3 million. Those are grants that we've actually received and got confirmation, so that's obviously very positive. Also, while those grants were submitted, we have actually submitted some additional, which we have not heard before, so we're hopeful that we're going to get. And what we've submitted in the last 12 months, the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Local Recreation Improvement Grant for Fairway Park, New Jersey Historic Trust, this is the Historic Structure Report for the Reformed Dutch Church. Again, we've been working on that. Water Resource Conservation Education, the AARP Foundation, a pocket park with COVID-19 memory gardens. Again, that's something that we applied for. New Jersey DEP, it pays to plug electric vehicle charging stations. Again, that's, charging stations are going to be an item of the future. And FEMA assistance to firefighters air compressed fuel stations. So that's, those are applications that have been completed and have been submitted. And then our last one, are grants that we're presently working on. These are New Jersey State Library Construction Bonds, seeking 150,000 for the roof and window replacements. The New Jersey DEP Urban Parks, inclusive of playgrounds at Fairway Park. New Jersey DEP Green Acres Development, ballfield improvement at Fairway. New Jersey DEP Grand Acres, this is the boardwalk alongside the Third River. NJDOT Safe Streets to Transit, pedestrian safety improvements near Silver Lake Light Rail, and the Congressional Appropriation Pedestrian Safety Improvements near Silver Lake Light Rail. So this is, as you can see, we've been extremely busy, and again, the first slide shows great success, second slide shows hopeful of success, and then the third slide is grants that we are presently working on as we speak today. And certainly, that's my, my report, but always available for any questions later on.
The, the one thing I'll add to that is the, our grants people are working on the library construction bond. It's a $150,000 bond. There is a 50% match due by the response, due by the municipality. The library is going to be funding that match. The township will not be responsible for that match at all. They're funding it through their capital improvement. That was part of the money they were going to give back to us, and we couldn't figure that out, so it's going to come at no cost to taxpayers. Anything, any questions for the manager?
No questions. I just want to give a, a quick shout out to our grant committee, who is, you know, besides myself and the mayor and Anthony, we also have Jackie and Gabby Bennett-Mini on it, and she really takes the lead on all of our environmental stuff and some of the history stuff, so I just want to thank her for doing all this work that she does, obviously volunteering too. So thank you to her.
Okay. Next item on our agenda. We got to just switch the camera. So we're going away from presenter to camera, right? Kelly, what time do you have to be in tomorrow? What time do you have to be in tomorrow? Okay, everybody, we're back. Next item on the agenda is the report of the mayor. So I usually try to stay as consistent as possible. I do some news, I do some past events and some upcoming events. We're going to go quick. So I did want to announce that the township is mourning the death of Mr. James Cazarelli, who is a valued member of the community, as well as former trustee of the Bellevue Public Library and relative to Councilman Cazarelli to my right. So.
Thank you, Mayor.
We have our deepest regrets.
I appreciate that.
I know the township manager's working with the library on some mourning bunting for the library. Correct?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay. I do want to say that, as Eric mentioned early on about Washington Avenue, most people don't notice when things that look bad get taken away. You do not have flashing lights anymore. What you do have on all the corners are those great flowers. Again, it's initiative that started a couple of years ago. We get a lot of positive comments on them. I can't tell you how many times I see on Instagram or Facebook people taking pictures of them, just looks great. It really dresses everything up. As you heard, we just had a Futsal presentation. That's looking like another new facility for Belleville, at potentially zero tax dollar money. Another sports facility, taking some unused public space and making it worthwhile to our youth and to our students and to our children. Again, another home run, I think. Report a concern is up on our township website. It's not easy to find sometimes when you hit our website. On the right-hand side, there's some buttons there. One says, report a concern. You no longer have to email me, Facebook me, Instagram me, DM me, text me, send me handwritten letters. You can report the concern yourself right from our website. I think we're going to try and tweak it a little bit. I have not found it to be that user-friendly, but it's definitely a start. Next up, summer jobs. While we are not necessarily doing our summer camp, we do have a limited number of summer jobs available for our youth. They would be working either in DPW or recreation at $10 an hour, correct?
That is correct.
Schools are closed tomorrow. I got a text message this afternoon from Dr. Tomko. Because of the heat index for tomorrow, school is closed, physical schools closed, they are going to still be virtual, correct?
Yes.
Still virtual. And we have good news. We are told that as of July 5th, Town Hall will be reopening fully to, to the same way it was pre-COVID. So however Town Hall was pre-COVID, with all the doors being unlocked and not necessarily having to stand in line, especially when it's raining or windy to pay your tax light, your taxes or pay anything else, you'll be able to have free rain once again in the building as you were able to do pre-COVID. That's exciting news. Past events, we had a great Memorial Day ceremony. Belleville does Memorial Day right. We had two different ceremonies, one down at Dutch Reform Church, the cemetery, if you haven't seen it, looks amazing. Why is that? Because we've taken more of an interest in that cemetery, even though it's not ours, but we do consider it historic Belleville. So we've been working, myself, Councilman Cazarelli, been working through the, the manager. We basically get some of our vendors to go in and do us some service by cleaning out some brush and taking down trees. That's always good to see. This past week, we had a Juneteenth banner raising at the library. Belleville's branch, the NAACP was involved in that. That was always, always nice to see them, always a nice event. If you didn't see it on social media, we had our groundbreaking for the high school municipal sports complex, 5.5 million dollar investment, $2 million done by Green Acres money, 3.5 bonds passed by this governing body, I think that was actually passed years ago. No matter what, the, the money to pay for that is already baked into the budget, and if you do remember, we're looking at a $39 tax increase this year for that. This past weekend was a busy weekend. This past weekend, we also did a street naming for former commissioner and former councilman, Mr. Angelo Rizzoli. I served with Angelo 20 years ago. Him and I just sit over there on that end, and great guy. Him and I became dear friends. I served with him for four years. His passing was very sad. Silver Lake meant a lot to him, and we renamed Lake Street Angelo Rizzoli Way. Upcoming events, tomorrow, pride flag raising at Clara Moss. It's the second year that I'll be participating in that, something I'm very proud of. The First Tee Program is going to be a groundbreaking Wednesday at noon. The First Tee Program will be taking place in Hendrix, Hendrix Golf Course. If you don't know what the First Tee Program is, I'm somebody who watches golf. I watched golf all weekend. I watched the Women's Open all weekend, and all weekend on international and international television, all they kept talking about was Essex County's First Tee Program. Why is that? Because while this is mostly women, professional women, there was one amateur. She's 17 years old, from New Jersey, going to Stanford, and she is a product of the Essex County First Tee Program. What does that mean? 600 youth, and where they have these are traditionally areas that youth, like we just heard about Futsal, might not have accessibility to golf or to equipment or to the proper training. Newark, there's three county golf courses. We Quake in Newark, Belleville, Hendrix in Belleville, and Burn in West Orange. We Quake was the only First Tee Program. Belleville will be the second. We're having a groundbreaking on Wednesday, potentially up to 600 local children. Belleville, Nutley, Bloomfield, this area, suburban area, will have accessibility to free golf equipment, golf lessons, trained by professionals, and we just saw a woman, a 17-year-old woman from New Jersey, proud product of that program, literally almost win the USO, but I think she came in third or fourth. So again, very, very excited. That's a game changer for us for our recreation. I mentioned last time, we're going to have a small 4th of July event, probably a small ceremony at Dutch Reform Church. More on that to come. Summer concert series, we did an amazing job locating and organizing seven, eight different bands through the months of July and August. They will take place more than likely in the grass area of the high school. We encourage everybody to bring chairs and blankets. More information on the exact bands will be coming out shortly. We might very well kick it off with the vets, because the first Thursday is the 8th, and the last one is August 29th. We might end with some fireworks, just because we feel like we're not getting a true 4th of July this year. Future things to come, the Food Truck Festival will be back sometime in, I believe, early October, and as always, check our library website for all the upcoming events. I'm done with the mayor's report, so therefore, we are going to move on to committee reports. The first council meeting of the month. The first council meeting of the month. We have ad hoc committees here in Belleville. Any council member that has an experience or has a need to have a say in something can obviously do so. So I'll usually start from the deputy mayor on down. Mr. Graziano, just make sure your mic is on if you have anything to say.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Going my right to left, Councilwoman Depeña.
Nothing at this moment.
Your right, Councilman Cazarelli.
I don't, but I do have something, but we'll do that in the public hearing. I'll do all the grants in the public hearing.
Okay. Dog park. So we've been building a dog park, and it looks like it's nearly complete. We're trying to set a grand opening day for that, correct?
Yeah, actually, we, I think, Jackie, what did we say, about two weeks, something like that? 26?
Nope, don't, we haven't been enough at 26 yet.
Nope.
No. About two weeks, maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe two weeks. Okay. Next item on our agenda, it's a little unique for this type of meeting, so it's a special action. Madam Clerk, just make sure your mic is on, please.
It is on. We have public hearing on the three grant applications. I'll read each one. First one is a resolution authorizing grant with the State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Urban Parks Initiative. This is for Fairway Park improvements, ball field, playground, and other recreation facilities. The second one is resolution authorizing grant with the State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Local Government Land Acquisition and Park Development Program. This is also for Fairway Park for ball fields, playground, and other recreational facilities. And the last one is resolution authorizing grant with the State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Local Government Stewardship Program. And this focuses on the Third River at Fairway Park.
Thank you. So this is a, I, things like this, things like the budget often come out of, out of order sometimes to me, but, so we're gonna, I'm just gonna need a motion to open a public hearing on this.
Motion open.
Second it.
We have a motion made, and second clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depeña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. So we have a public hearing. This public hearing is just on these three resolutions. This is not the public hearing for any ordinances for second reading. This is not the public hearing for public commenting. So this is just if you have something to say or ask or question about any of these three resolutions, they're all for grants. Mr. Frantantonio, gonna have you come forward, Mr. Frantantonio. Chief, can you just make sure that microphone is turned on? I know we have to get used to this coming forward and speaking to the mic.
Yeah, good evening, mayor and council.
Tommy. Tom.
Um, I looked at these three, and there's a lot of numbers that are conflicting. And, you know, the first one is 500,000. And then number two, it's got three, 600, 1,000, 800, 2,000, then the matching share, 200,000. Same with number three, there's three sets of numbers. What exactly are we doing or proposing to do? What is the actual dollars that are going to be in grant form? And what are these actual dollars taxpayers are going to be paying for? Because it adds up to over 3 million if you add up all these numbers. So first of all, what are we doing up there?
Either I'll refer that to the manager, Mr. Cazarelli.
So, Vin, let me, I have a little thing that describes each one, so let me. It's a little confusing, because two of the grants actually are for the same thing, but they like overlap each other, because if you don't get one, you automatically get considered for the other grant. So let me just, let me just read this real quick. For the urban, for the Urban Parks Initiative, the maximum funding is $500,000 with no matching funds. So there's a total of 2.5 million that's going to be distributed statewide, so it's very competitive. For this reason, NJDEP is also allowing applicants to roll over their application to the Green Acres funding application. So that's why there's a little bit of overlap on that.
So that one's total grant?
Yes.
Let me just, but in one second, Vin, so it might be a little confusing. We have three different things we're doing. The first one is just a mere application. We're not spending the money, we don't have the money, there's no money owed from us if we get it.
Yeah, and it's not three different projects. So there's a lot of overlap, just to try and get, get the grants. So you're allowed to overlap, it gives you double the amount of chance to get them. Basically, if the funds are awarded, if we do get the grant, the township could have a complete project. So it's, it's possible that we could get $800,000 if we get both grants. So that's where you get in that, that $800,000 if we get both of the grants. Basically, the scope of work for Fairway Park is a new small fenced dog park, a unisex restroom, a little access road for maintenance vehicles around the back, renovations to the baseball field, which is the clay, the outfield grass, the backstop, the dugouts, perimeter fencing, and a new playground that will be replaced with an all-inclusive playground for users of all abilities, so handicapped, autistic, it's going to have different stations for that. So that, that is, the total for that is 800, 2,000, 600, and 5,000. So if we do get that grant, it's, we're doing two applications for the same project. So that's why it's a little, it looks a little tricky with the numbers. And then the final one is the Green Acres Local Stewardship Program. That promotes open space projects that have a specific environmental benefit, so not so much recreation, but more environmental. So that project, still at Fairway Park, would be cleaning up the river, the Third River. So that's going to include cleaning up the riverbank, making it more erosion-proof, cleaning the litter, taking out the fence, and hopefully creating a little boardwalk nature trail along the riverbank. So all these projects are all at Fairway. We just have to separate them a little bit for the grant, how the grants are written.
And just, just one other small item, just to make, Mr. Cazarelli.
Very well said, but just one consideration. Normally during the course of the year, these applications that come out, come out with spacing between them, okay? And so you apply for one, you find out that you weren't successful, then six months, another one comes out, you apply for it. Because of COVID, there was a little bit of a backlog, so to speak, so they put all of them out at the same time. But they told us to apply for all of them, because the likelihood is, we're not going to get all three, we may not get two, hopefully we get one. But because of COVID, there is no spacing. And so normally, an application comes out, I mean, a grant comes out, you put the application in, you wait to hear back. If you're successful, that's great. If you're not successful, six months later, four months later, another grant comes out. You apply for that one. Because of COVID, they all came out at the same time. Matter of fact, I think two out of the three have the same exact deadline, June 15th. So we have to get the applications in, and that's why we're having the public hearing tonight. And that's.
So they're all for Fairway?
Yeah, they're all for Fairway, and there's also no matching funds requirement on any of them, so.
Well, there is two lines, it says matching share on one, and the second one, 200,651. And on three, it says matching funds, 111,000.
That's if you, that's if you get all of them, but we're not going to get all of them.
Right. So you're saying they're all grants?
Yeah, yeah. The Urban, Urban, Urban Parks Initiative is, uh... Yeah, that's the one that you could get up to 500,000. But if we get it together with the other one, it's 802,000, 800, 2,650, and 50 cents, whatever.
But on, on that one, it says granted 600, 1,000, a 200,000 matching grant. And number three says the matching is 111,000. I read through the whole thing there, and those two.
It says if.
Mike, your mic, your mic.
Right.
Yeah, it says it's if a match is required, so it's not necessarily required.
And then if, if it matches granted, they have to move to accept it.
So they could just give you 600, or they could give you 800, and then they require a...
Right.
Just because you ask for 800, doesn't mean you're getting 800, so.
Thank you. Anybody else for this particular topic? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing. We have a motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections to closing? I doubt it.
Would you like to act on these now, too?
What's that?
Would you like to act on them now, too?
Yeah.
Make a motion to...
Proof?
Second it.
Is that your motion, Vin?
Yeah.
Is that what we, Kelly, a motion to approve the three resolutions?
Yes.
We're gonna approve them all as like a consent, all three at one shot, right?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion made by Councilman Cazarelli and a second by the deputy mayor. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depeña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Next item on the agenda, approval minutes.
Regular meeting of April 27th, 2021.
Can I have a motion?
Take a motion.
Second.
Motion made, and second clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depeña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Communications, we have a few.
A request received from the, request received for an Italian heritage flag raising ceremony at town hall on Sunday, October 10th at 9:00 a.m., and for a car parade caravan beginning at 12:30.
Do we, for the flag raisings, we just accept the communication?
Yes.
I know with the street closings, we send to the police, but...
To the police.
Correct.
We used to approve that stuff. Okay.
B, request received from the residents of Overlook Avenue for permission to conduct a block party on Saturday, June 19th from 10:00 to 11:00. C, request received for Peruvian flag raising ceremony at town hall on Friday, July 30th at 1:00. And D, request received from the residents of Rossmore Place for permission to conduct a block party on Saturday, June 12th from 2:00 to 10:00 p.m. And the last one is E, request received from the residents of Hill Street for permission to conduct the block party on Sunday, July 4th from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m.
Being competition to, competition at a deputy mayor's block party. Interesting. So just so the public knows, block parties basically come into the clerk as a communication to the governing body. They get referred to the police department for traffic control, and flag raisings are basically noted, and then we work with organizations if need be. We don't really take action on communications. Next item on the agenda is ordinances.
Ordinance number one for public hearing and ordinance approving the financial agreement for long-term tax exemption binding between the Township of Belleville and R&amp;R Belleville Urban Renewal LLC.
So we already had the first reading on this. This would be the public hearing, second and final reading, and including the public participation of that. Being that we're literally down nearly half of our council, I really do believe that the public has the right to know where every council member stands on topics like this. They're all going to be back at the next meeting, so I would definitely welcome a motion to table this until the next meeting, so all council members can be seated, they can give their opinion on this matter, and they could be heard by members of the public.
I'll second that motion.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, you make the motion.
Yes, I agree, mayor, so yeah, definitely. I'll, motion to table. And I know he had second already.
Sounds like we have a motion made and seconded to table. For motions to table, there is no communicate, no discussion after that. We just have to call a vote. So, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depeña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance number two for public hearing, ordinance of the Township of Belleville, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, authorizing the acquisition of certain property known as 580 Belleville Avenue, New Jersey, also known as Block 2501, Lot 2, and 233 Franklin Avenue, Belleville, New Jersey, also known as Block 2501, Lot 1.03. And if necessary, authorizing the institution of eminent domain proceedings.
So we just received a letter from a law firm after 5 o'clock this evening, and I'm not sure our town attorney has had time to review it.
No, so it was a letter addressed to mayor and council, and I was copied on it shortly before 5 o'clock. It was actually shortly before 5 o'clock, which I didn't actually see and be able to read until five minutes before I walked into this meeting. So I, I think it would be prudent if council table this ordinance as well, so I could at least review it. I don't know anything about it until I, I get a chance for, I know it's from the property owner's attorney, so before, and, and I would assume that it would want to be discussed, and I'm not in a position to discuss it with mayor and council during the, during the public hearing, so I think it's prudent to, to table it, if, that would be my recommendation.
I'll make a motion to table it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to table. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depe, Depeña. Graziano.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is public comments, and a motion to open public comments.
Motion.
We have a motion made in second to open public comments. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depeña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. We now have public commenting open. I'm gonna entertain anybody who, Mr. Frantantonio, you're first up, just come forward. I know it's new procedures.
Phyllis Frantantonio, Mount Prospect Avenue. I wanted to know if you're doing anything with the School One property that needs to be cleaned up drastically. Whoever the owner is, I think you should get after him to clean it. It looks horrendous, especially coming in from North Arlington, Carney, or even trucks leaving from Belleville people. I mean, that, that makes an impression on people. You put the flowers around, I have to say, they do look beautiful, but that is an eyesore.
Agreed.
I mean, you had four council people that set up there previously and just gave it away, like, to the, you know, to sell the property. And I think this person should be made accountable to clean that up. I mean, give him a fine like the Dutch Reformed Church got. Let him get there and clean it. It's really terrible.
Mr. Manager?
On my notes, school number one cleanup.
I've been driving around all weekend taking pictures of long grass and emailing the manager, so I, I agree with you, it looks terrible.
And I just want one more thing. The public works yard, the back part where they're dumping all the leaves and bags, that looks terrible. Maybe we can do something in cleaning that up. I've seen other public work yards in other counties, and they don't look like that. I think we need to clean it.
We did get rid of the huge pile of dirt, and the, I think the leaf bag issue is because they only come quarterly or whenever we pay them.
It's real, there's really no other place to put them, but, but could we be a little neater?
Absolutely.
Yes, okay.
Or can we just get rid of it more?
That's what I was gonna say. Can we?
Allow them to burn them.
Everything costs its money.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly look at it. Thank you. Anybody else for public commenting? Mr. Frantantonio.
The, um, resolution number, let me read, could the new format, 13, 1.11. For the Dutch Reformed Church. This grant, if I read correctly, somewhere about 70-something thousand dollars.
That would be on our agenda, Resolution Number 11, 11.
All right, online, it shows up as 13.
Okay.
But what, this, under the, on the internet agenda, how are we doing this now? How do we read this? Because I printed this out from the agenda, it says 13, .1, .11.
That's the section.
That's...
Which is the section?
13? So what agenda item is, how do we, if I want to refer to agenda item number?
Whatever the section is...
Whatever the section is, it's still, it's revision 11. It'd be 11 on all.
All right, so what does the 13 mean?
The section.
That's, you know how we have the Roman numerals? We have the Roman numerals, Vin, on the regular agenda?
Yeah. I see, so it's the far right number. Okay, in regard to resolution 11, I don't know if I print that, somewhere around 73,000. Is that for the steeple repair?
Vin, I don't believe so.
No, no. This is for basically a study of the whole church. They're gonna, they have a structural engineer coming, they have a stained glass window expert, they have someone who specializes in the, the interior finishes of, of historic churches. There's about a team of maybe 10 people that it would include.
Again, you know, I get a lot of info coming from throughout the community, some of it correct, some of it's false. I hope what I'm hearing is not correct, that some people in the council are trying to take over that church, all right? I hope we help them support and keep that church as a historic site.
I think we've given a heck of a lot of support to the church.
All right. I helped that church-
Clearing out the cemetery two weekends ago.
For over three decades, I helped that church, they had yard sales, I helped them with their attic, I painted their sign and donated for the 300th anniversary. The sign you see at the cemetery, I donated it, along with Jay Baucher years ago, and we helped them. Bought my Boy Scout troop down there to clean up the cemetery, so I hope you're continuing to help them, Ryan, rather than to take it from them.
Well, you just heard me say three times now, we actually had our contractors clear out the cemetery. I think that constitutes help.
Okay, so I hope we maintain it. And we had loaned them money to do a temporary repair in the steeple. Did we get repaid?
We did. They actually overpaid us, we had to give them a refund.
Thank you. And somebody should shoot the contractor, because when they put the plywood up, they put 15-pound felt paper instead of the weather shield, which would have stuck and lasted for years and years. And a couple of weeks after they put it up, Mr. Cazarelli, you're a contractor, idiotic to go that high and put 15-pound felt up.
I had my own words with them, absolutely.
Yeah, so I hope you did it. All right, then, resolution, I had to read this. All right, then I guess it would be number five. Mayor Melham, you did it again tonight, you're bragging about a 39-point, $39 tax increase in the budget, and you're bragging how the first time ever, we got a budget in on time, we got a budget time. According to this resolution, if you read it, you don't have a budget. And the first sentence says it all. Whereas in anticipated, it is anticipated that the Town of Belleville, Township of Belleville, will not have all budget components approved and ready to strike a 2021 tax rate in advance of third quarter taxes due August 1st, 2021. So you don't have a budget in place. You don't have it, and some, I couldn't be here because of a family event for the budget hearing, but some of my questions, I start to look at the thing on YouTube or whatever, and with technology, your meeting disappeared after about 15 minutes.
I emailed you. They were still online so far.
I emailed you those answers the same day that you submitted them.
Do I?
I emailed you back.
All right, Mr. Frantantoni, I do need to wrap up, you are out of time.
You email them to me?
The same day you submitted those questions, I answered every one and read and submitted them back to you.
Well, again, I'm not good, I'll have to check my emails, which I don't do too frequently. But this is, there's, in that budget, many line items are blank. Number, number two is the second year in a row that none of the departments are total. We always used to have a total, why are there? You're getting 3.5 million dollars from the federal government, why isn't that in the budget? There's a lot of revenue that is not listed under anticipated revenue, and I'm telling you, that's-
We did have a, we did have a budget hearing on that, most, every single one of your questions were answered that evening. The manager just indicated that he emailed you even those answers, even though we discussed them here, but we are out of time, I do have to move on.
Well, the fact that tonight, you're going to vote on this, and I have some questions with three people absent, if you can vote on this, being this is a money item, I defer that to the attorney to consider it.
I do need you to wrap up with Frantantoni, thank you.
But we don't have a budget, contrary to what you've said.
Mr. Frantantoni, you sat here for many years, you understand the process, we have to introduce a budget on time. You've always stood here for 15, 20 years, saying that we never introduced on time. We introduced our budget on time, it's now in the hands of Trenton. Once it comes back to us, there is no public hearing, we just vote on it, because it's right now in the hands of Trenton. Thank you, am I correct, Ms. CFO? Thank you.